Good morning, good morning everyone. God bless you. This is a blessed day because this is the day that the Lord has made. We shall rejoice and be glad in it. Amen. We praise God today. Such a familiar scripture to all of us. And we are just so happy, New Mount Olive, we love you. We greet you in the name of our Lord and Savior Jesus Christ. And to all of those that join us, our family, our friends, former students, former coworkers, and all those that are out there, we greet you with Jesus' joy. Why? Because the joy of the Lord is our strength. This morning, we are starting our new book, The Book of Psalms. And as always, I would like to give you some background information. So you will definitely always need your pencil, your pen, some paper, a notebook. And it's just good to have a nice notebook for your Bible study. So that you can keep all of your notes together to go back and reference later on. So the Lord is good and greatly to be praised. We're in the Book of Psalms, as I said, the Book of Psalms. Let us bow our heads in prayer. Father, I stretch my hands to thee, no other help I know. If thou withdraw thyself from us, where shall we go? Father, we thank you that it is yet another day that you have given each of us life, that you have given us a portion of our health and strength. And for this God, we say, "Thank you." It could be, Father, so much worse than it is. So we thank you for what we are blessed to have. Father, even though some of us have colds, and some of us don't feel good in our bodies, and some of us are grieving the loss of loved ones, we still give you the glory, the honor, and the praise. Father, we thank you. And now, as we come to our Bible study time, open our hearts and our minds, God, that we might be receptive of your word. Let us, Father God, continue to trust in you. Let us continue, Father God, to know that, you know, why should we worry if we trust in you? So God, thank you. Help us to be able to make it day by day, knowing, Father God, that there is an expected end, and that you are yet in control. Lord, we thank you for everything that you have done, for what you're doing right now, God, in each of our lives, and what you will do on tomorrow. It is in Jesus' name that we pray now with thanksgiving. Amen. 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 As we are looking this morning at the Book of Psalms. The Book of Psalms is also called The Book of Truth. The Books of Truth. We have learned that there are 150 Psalms. There are 150 Psalms. Seventy-three of those Psalms was written by David, the king. Asaph wrote 12. A-S-A-P-H is the author of 12. And the sons of Korah, K-O-R-A-H, of 11. Other Psalms were written by Solomon, Heeman, Ethan, and Moses wrote the 90th Psalm. It has been noted that it is likely that Ezra and the other Jewish religious leaders compiled the Psalms into their existing order during Ezra's lifetime in the fourth century B.C. They were written from 1,000 B.C. until 400 B.C. by these different authors. In the 150 messages of Psalms, there is encouragement, there is instruction, there is inspiration, there is truth, and there are solutions to the great issues that were facing mankind. The needs of the human heart and mind are cared for in this unique book called Psalms. Collectively, it is Psalms with an S. But when we refer to each individual book, it is Psalm, Psalm 1, or the first Psalm, the 23rd Psalm, the 90th Psalm, the 121st Psalm, the 150th Psalm. But when we talk about them collectively, we can say, "The Book of Psalms," and we add the S. We find out that when surveys are taken about which book most people, most likely concerning the Old Testament, is there a favorite, or is there a book that people like more than others? What do you think that book would be? Ah, you are correct, for those that have this thought. It would be the 23rd Psalm. The 23rd Psalm. That is the most recognized chapter book in the entire Bible. And we all know that it simply begins, "The Lord is my shepherd; I shall not want." And it continues. That is the most recognized, or the most favorite book that we have in our Bible. The Psalms are poetry intended to be set to music, and prayer intended to be prayed in worship. I'm going to say that again, because I need you to make sure we are understanding what this Book of Psalms is. It's poetry intended to be set to music, and prayer intended to be prayed in worship. In ancient Israel, most of poetry were by means by the which the people expressed their deepest emotions of their hearts. Through joy and tragedy, faith and failure, people sang and spoke to God through the Psalms. The titles, Psalms and Salter, come from this page. The Christian Greek translation of the Old Testament, where they originally referred to stringed instruments such as the harp, the lyre, and lute, then to songs with their accompaniment. The traditional Hebrew title, and I'm going to spell it for you, is T-E-H-I-L-L-I-M, which means praises. The Hebrew word, T-E-H-I-L-L-I-M, which means praises. And even though many of the Psalms are, let me spell this Hebrew word for you, T-E-P-H-I-L-L-O-T. T-E-P-H-I-L-L-O-T, which means prayers. So we have praises, and we have prayers. In fact, one of the first collections included in the book was titled, "The Prayers of David, Son of Jesse." We find that in Psalms 72 and 20. Excuse me, and I apologize, I have a cold, so I probably will cough and sneeze throughout this broadcast. By the first century A.D., it was referred to as the Book of Psalms. You can find that in Luke 20th chapter, verse 42, and Acts 1:20. At that time, Psalms appears also to have been used as a title for the entire section of the Hebrew Old Testament, Canaan, more commonly known as the Writings. The Writings. And the reference for that is Luke 24:44. We're learning today that Psalms, the Book of Psalms, is divided into five sections. The Book of Psalms is divided into five sections. The first book, 1, is Psalms 1 through 41. The first book, which is Book 1, is divided into Psalms 1 through 41. And those books talk about, "God is beside us." God is Yahweh. God is beside us. The second book is Psalms 42 through Psalms 72. And this is talking about, "God goes before us." God goes before us. Book 3 is chapters 78 through 89. And chapter 78 through 89 is talking about, "God is all around us." Hallelujah. God is all around us. Book 4 is Psalms 90 through 106. Psalms 90 through 106. And this means that God is above us. And the last book, 5, that it is divided into, Book 5, Psalms 107 through Psalms 150. This indicates and lets us know that God is among us. Hallelujah. God is among us. So Book 1, "God is beside us." Book 2, "God goes before us." Book 3, "God is all around us." Book 4, "God is above us." And Book 5, "God is among us." Each of these five books ends with a doxology or a song of praise. The final verse of each concluding Psalm includes either, "Praise the Lord," or, "Amen." The final verse of each concluding Psalm includes either, "Praise the Lord," or, "Amen." In the theology of the Psalms, it is noted that reading the Book of Psalms is always beneficial. Because there is always a passage that the reader can relate to at that particular time. I often have told you, New Mount Olive, that sometimes a scripture does not come off the page. You can read and read, and it's all good, but it doesn't hit home sometimes until you are having a personal experience in your life. And you can go back and read a scripture that you have read 10, or 15, or 20 times, but it's when God is speaking to you that that scripture seems to jump off the page, and it has a better understanding, or meaning, or purpose in your life. So when we are going through something, we can relate better to some of the scriptures. So if one is going through difficult times and is looking for comfort, they can find it in the Book of Psalms. If one is full of contentment and joy, he can find it in the Book of Psalms to describe his feelings. The Book of Psalms shows several different forms of worship compiled, not having large groups of people, or magical words to say. Worship is personal. That's your time with God. Many of these ways are expressed in the Book of Psalms. In this introduction to Psalms 1 stands as a kind of introduction to the rest of the Psalms. Its subject matter is very general and basic, but it touches on the subjects that continually occur throughout the Book of Psalms. It declares the blessedness of the righteous, and the misery, and future of the wicked. It shares how man's life is set forth, both negatively and positively, also inwardly and externally, and both figuratively and literally. It summarizes what is to come in the rest of the Psalms. It actually represents two ways of life. Psalms represents, this first Psalm is going to represent, the way of the righteous and the way of the wicked. Again, Psalm 1 represents the way of the righteous and the way of the wicked. The key subject is the centrality of God's Word to the light and the fruitfulness of the righteous who truly love God's Word. The two things that flow from this is, number one, the importance and absolute necessity of the Scriptures. The importance and absolute necessity of the Scriptures. And number two, the changed character, stability, and fruitfulness that is promised to those who make Scripture the core of our lives. And we make it the core of our lives. It is a changed character. You cannot be in the Word of God, beloved. You cannot read His Word. You cannot develop a relationship with God. You cannot pray to Him each day. You cannot seek Him while He might yet be found. You cannot sing songs in hymns and remain the same. You will have a changed character. You will have stability and fruitfulness that is promised only to those who make the Scripture the core to their lives. Hallelujah. Psalms 1 is a wisdom Psalm. Please excuse me. Psalms 1 is a wisdom Psalm. There are praise, there are praise Psalms, there are lament Psalms, there are enthronement Psalms, and they all contain to some degree wisdom. But this Psalm 1 really opens us up in wisdom. All right. So as we are looking at that, this Psalm declares the improportions to the Word of God, and it makes it such that what God is saying in plain language to us, that there are two ways of life that is open to us. There are two ways. One means happiness, one means blessedness, and one means fruitfulness. The other means cursedness, it means unhappiness, and it means judgment. The choice, beloved, is ultimately ours. Blessedness is a choice. But to be blessed, one must by faith obey the conditions. The conditions, one must pursue the way of blessedness as described in this Psalm. Let us take a few moments and look at Psalms 1. Psalm 1. As we are looking at Psalm 1, it starts out to us by simply saying, "Blessed is the man that walketh not in the counsel of the ungodly, nor standeth in the way of sinners, nor sitteth in the seat of the scornful." That's what the very first Psalm is telling us. And when it starts out by saying blessed, we know that blessed, it's telling us that blessed is plural in the Hebrew. It literally means, "Oh, the blessedness," or "the blessings." It is an intensive plural, and is designed to emphasize the multiplicity of blessings and happiness to those who fulfill the requirements marked out in this Psalm. If we were to paraphrase it, it would sound something like, "Oh, how very, very, very happy is the one who walketh not in the counsel of the ungodly, nor standeth in the way of sinners, nor sitteth in the seat of the scornful." Let us now look at the rest of this. Verse 2 says, "But his delight is in the law of the Lord. And in his law doth he meditate day and night." He's going to be meditating day and night. "And he shall be like a tree planted by the rivers of water, that bring forth his fruit in his season. His leaf also shall not wither, and whatsoever he doeth shall prosper." Now, we know that a tree has a trunk, and of course, a bark, and it has roots. And the roots run deep. The roots run down into the ground. So if he's going to be like a tree planted by the rivers of water, the tree needs water in order to nourish those roots. So therefore, what we are saying is, you're going to be a tree planted. We're going to have long roots. We're going to be so embedded in the Word of God that we're going to be unmovable. So when the winds and storms of light rage and blow in our lives, we're not going to just fall over. We're not going to be blown over. Our roots, beloved, are so deep and so anchored in the Lord that we will be able, we might be blown a little, but we will not fall. We are anchored in Jesus, in Christ. Amen. Amen. And let's look at verses 4 through 6. So it helps us to know that verses 1, 2, 3 is about the holiness and happiness of a godly man, to meditate in God's Word both day and night. If we're doing that, we have less time to be in other people's affairs and concerns, less time that we are focusing on God, which will not allow Satan to come into our lives. Amen. So verses 4 through 6, it says, "The ungodly are not so." The ungodly, those who do not know God, amen. "But are like the chaff which the wind driveth away." The ungodly, their roots are not anchored. They're just planted there. They're just fixated there. They're just put there. So that means that anything that comes along, when the storms of light, when the winds of light, excuse me, when the situations of life come along in their lives and blows, they will be like the chaff which the wind driveth away. They are unstable. They are unsteady. Verse 5 says, "Therefore, the ungodly shall not stand in the judgment, nor sinners in the congregation of the righteous." Verse 6 says, "For the Lord knoweth the way of the righteous, but the way of the ungodly shall perish." Verses 4, 5, and 6, they're talking about the sinfulness and misery of a wicked man, the ground and reason of both. The ungodly are the reverse of the righteous, both in character and in condition. The ungodly are not so. It says, "They are led by the counsel," verse 4 says, "of the wicked, in the way of sinners to the seat of the scornful. They have no delight in the law of God. They bring forth no fruit, but they only do that which is evil." How, I don't know about you this morning, beloved, but I think about that, and I'm thinking that the righteous, you know, they're like useful, fruitful trees. The ungodly are like the chaff which the wind driveth away. I don't know, but you make that choice. Do you want to be fruitful in your life, or do you want to just go and blow with the wind? We must make a choice. We must choose ye this day whom we will serve. We must remember that God is in control of our life, that He is with us every step of the way. He walks beside us. He walks on the side. He is everything that we need. So we must make a decision. Are you going to be the blessed man that walketh not in the counsel of the ungodly, nor standeth in the way of the sinners, nor sitteth in the seat of the scornful? Or are you going to be like the chaff which the wind driveth away? Praise God. This ends our Bible study for today. I'm here to let you know that this God that we serve is real, and He has made provisions for us, that we can make choices, that we don't have to remain the same, that we can choose Him as our Lord and Savior, and knowing that He will walk with us. He will talk with us. He will be our guide, and He will lead us in the path of righteous men. Amen. Our homework assignment is to read chapters 2 and 3 for next week, that we come back, and we will go into detail in explaining what chapters 2 and 3 are all about. Amen. So read for your homework assignment. The Book of Psalms, chapter... the Book of Psalms, chapters two and three. May God bless you. May His peace be upon you. We will have our virtual communion on Sunday. We will have our virtual communion on this Sunday. Amen. The first Sunday in August. Stay safe. Stay healthy. Exercise wisdom. And be reminded that there's not a friend like the Lord in Jesus. No, not one. No, not one. Hey, God bless you today.